I'd like to call to order the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education on June 7th, 2021 at 6:30 PM in the Performing Arts Center. This meeting of the Mount Pleasant Public Schools Board of Education is a meeting conducted in public but is not a meeting of the public. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. The purpose of today's meeting is to conduct regular business that requires action by the board. These items may include those discussed at a previous meeting or presented to the board for discussion this evening. As a courtesy, please silence your cellphones and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, I will read the Indigenous Land Acknowledgement Statement. Mount Pleasant Public Schools is honored to acknowledge the Inishunnabi people whose traditional land we are gathered on today. To recognize the Inishunnabi people and their ancestral land is our expression of gratitude and appreciation and a way of honoring the Indigenous people who have been living and working on this land since time immemorial and whose land on which the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe have resided and who have continued to reside on for centuries. We feel it is important to understand the longstanding history of this land and to seek to understand our place within that history. Next is roll call.
Dana Cocken?
Here.
Tim Oderkirk?
Here.
Willem Pengele?
Yeah.
Courtney Stegman?
Here.
Sheila Murphy?
Jessica Jernigan?
Here.
Amy Bond?
Here. Next is the approval of the agenda. If there's any questions or anything that someone would like to add?
I have something to add, Amy.
Okay.
I would like to add some information regarding the Gretchen Isabella Board meeting that I attended representing the school board for the election. So I just wanted to update the board on what was discussed at that board meeting earlier today. I recommend under New Business, a letter F. So, and the letter F being the Gretchen Isabella Board meeting. Is the mic on, John? Testing, testing, testing. Testing.
Okay. I can, I can say it's the, um, there is a number F on the added to the agenda, which is the ISD Budget Agenda Board Meeting that Mr. Oderkirk went to earlier today and there was a vote on, and that will be covered under New Business as number F. Or letter F. Okay. Next, we move on to Reports and Updates.
Good evening, everyone. The first item under the Reports and Updates section is acknowledging correspondence received prior to last Thursday, June 3rd. We received correspondence from Michelle Maury and Jill Wilson. The next item under Reports and Updates is a budget discussion that I'll ask Ginger to go ahead and lead this evening.
Yes, so we've been very busy working on the June budget update and the new year budget in my office. It has been a challenge with the new software. Just today, I tried to upload a giant budget adjustment and I had a 93-page error report shot back to me. So, it's quite a process that we're going through, but I have faith that we'll have it, everything ready for you before the next board meeting. Preliminary looks at June. The December budget that was approved by you projected contributing back to fund balance $461,000. That did not include the 1.5% increase we gave the district on their salary. So with adding that back in and then increasing the FICA retirement and workers' comp benefits that go along with that, it's really looking like we might be projected to spend just into fund balance, which typically we don't spend 100% of our budget. So I really think we're going to have another very even year. And then building new year budget, there's still no definite number yet on what our foundation allowance will be for new year. So that always makes it fun. But a lot of estimates, preliminary estimates were talking about a $164 per pupil increase in our foundation allowance. The governor has proposed a much higher number than that now that the May Revenue Estimating Conference, Conference, um, predicted, or projected higher revenues in the state aid and the general fund, but nothing yet has been passed. So MSBO is saying that 250 per pupil increase could be conservative. There's still a lot of people still using a lower number because nothing, we just really don't know yet. I think it would be conservative of us, which we always try to budget conservatively going into the new year without having updated or, you know, solid information. If we stick with 164 per pupil increase but a flat pupil count, so that would adjust if we do get a higher foundation allowance but we have lower people count, which has kind of been the trend lately, they would kind of even out. And we would be able to look at that obviously early in the new school year. Count is early October, so usually by November, December time, we have a lot better idea of what that would look like. But that's where we're at right now. We're still working very hard on getting all of the information into the system where I need it. And as soon as we have all that in a, in the proper format and everything, we'll get that to you.
Does anyone have any budget questions for Ginger at this point? Thank you, Ginger. Thank you for all your work. I know it's been a long transition. Next item under Reports and Updates is the WAY Quarterly Report. Introduce Kim Funnel, Director of the WAY Program. Kim, thank you for being here this evening. I'll pull up your presentation.
Perfect, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us. Normally, I'm here with a couple other friends, but this evening, I'm here solo. So I do have our Quarterly Board Report to share with you. We do have some exciting news to share, so I'll get started. This year, as you know, through our COVID guidelines and challenges, we have had several students that have chosen to remain virtual all through, throughout the year. So this past spring, we had a total of 52 students that came in on a regular basis to lab on, on daily basis, Monday through Thursday. We had 20 students participate virtually on a daily students, on a daily basis. And our lab mentor, Amy Van Meter, worked tirelessly, always talking about jobs. What comes next? How can we help you find a job? So she, she really took it upon herself to work closely with all of the students, but really helped 15 of them write resumes and apply for jobs. And of that, they did receive employment. So that was very exciting for those students. We also had an opportunity to help families outside of the school setting. So Jamie Cartier was delivering meals to approximately 10 students and families on a weekly basis. And those students and families were either in quarantine, or the family was sick with COVID, or they maybe didn't have transportation to come to a pickup spot. So those are our virtual students that maybe needed some additional support with school meals. Students and staff, we had a spring cleanup day. It was, we didn't quite hit the, the April date, but we did do a day after all of our testing fun that we had this spring. We planned a school-wide cleanup day where we all participated an hour in the morning and an hour in the afternoon because we do have scheduled lab time. So we picked times that we knew students would be there. It was a beautiful day. We had maintenance bring over some extra rakes and bags and things. So we spent time picking up trash and broken branches and things like that and just kind of cleaned up Oasis in and of itself. So that was a lovely, fun time that staff and students were able to participate in. Our students also participated in a behavioral health, sporting, and cultural events led by the Saginaw Indian-Chippewa Tribe. Through that, they introduced a pathway program to our students and we, which is a, a new program that they are offering, which is a year-long college prep program. And we do have one student signed up to participate in that for next year. Two weeks ago, week and a half ago actually, Thursday, we had our graduation. And thank you, Amy and Ms. Mulliger, for attending. It was a rain or shine day and event. We did not have a rain-out date selected mainly because we didn't really have a lot of dates to pick from. And we knew families would be traveling, so we just, we forged ahead. And while it was very cold that day, I think the temperature when I got back in my vehicle that night was 47 degrees. We did have a very wonderful celebration of our graduates, not only from our Alternative WAY Program, but from our adult, adult education program as well. And so that was a lovely celebration. Last August, we had identified 18 potential WAY High School graduates. And through weekly graduate meetings, spearheaded by April Scott and Steve Wheeler and Jamie Cartier, 14 of those 18 actually did finish and receive their diploma that evening. We have one potential graduate that will still be able to finish up through this fiscal year and possibly two. So we're very, very excited about that news. Um, let's see here. A few more highlights. Oop, that was my last page, sorry. Our enrollment numbers, so you're hearing me talk about who's attending lab in person, who's attending virtually. I'm sure you're wondering who our enrollment, where our enrollment number is. We have 103 total students enrolled at this time. That's minus some of our graduates. And then we have 78 high school students and 25 middle school students. Seven of our eighth-grade students will be moving up to ninth grade with the WAY Program. And we will continue to work collaboratively with the middle school and high school building administrators and their staff on enrollments and referrals for next year. This next slide does highlight the number of projects submitted from the last quarterly report to this last spring. And so you can see that from November until this June, we saw a large increase in the number of projects that were submitted, also a jump in credit earned from that time, and the number of hero logins. So the hero logins represent whether or not they're in person in lab or they're logging in from home. It could, I mean, we have students that work in the wee hours of the night, and amazingly, there's experts that can connect with them and help them with some of their questions that they might be needing help with at that wee hour of the nighttime. Lab attendant hours also almost doubled from last quarter report to this quarter report. The last slide, we just wanted to highlight some of the social-emotional supports that we are offering our students, both in person and virtually. Steve Wheeler, our project-aware counselor that has been assigned to our building for Tuesdays and Thursdays, he's there twice a week, full day, helped me put together this slide. And so this is a representative of the data that he has collected. He is there again, like I said, Monday and Tuesdays, 8:00 in the morning till 4:00. He also attends those graduate meetings, or did attend the graduate meetings, that were held virtually on Monday evenings. 25 middle school students are in our WAY Program. He delivered the social-emotional curriculum second steps one time a week. He would go into the classroom to deliver, to deliver that lesson. He also saw on an average of seven students individual, for individual sessions each week. Our WAY High School students, we had 87 students. And again, that's just a moment in time. The number fluctuated through the year. Again, the Road to Graduation senior meetings was one time a week. And then he averaged eight individual sessions with students each week. Steve is also able to provide services to our community ed or our adult ed students. That number, we have 146 adult ed students signed up to take classes or GED prep classes. He started, we wanted to, we have a number of students who are at an age that they just need some life coaching and some life skill mentoring. And so most everybody that walks through our door needs a math class. And so we decided that offering a life skills class one time a week in our math class was probably hitting the sweet spot of where most of our students were coming in person. And we also livestreamed it, so those that were virtual could log in and attend his sessions virtually. So that ended up being a very big success for him to be able to, excuse me, to reach a population that really just needs that, some, some guidance and some coaching along the way of making good choices and how to apply for jobs and, you know, just so, some of those inner struggles that young adults have. So we hope to continue that. I don't know if, I'm sure the board did obviously approve Steve's resignation, so we're hoping that we'll be able to fill that position and maintain some support at this building. Steve was also very generous to offer his services Monday through Friday, even on weekends if there were crisis situations that did arise. So we are very fortunate to be able to have a project-aware counselor assigned to our building, and we very much hope that continues for next year. So last slide is just some questions. If you have anything for me, I'd be happy to, if I can answer, I'll definitely find an answer out for you.
I do have a couple of questions. Thank you, Kim. There is a big difference between the fall of 2020 and the spring of 2021, especially in the hours that almost doubled. Is it because it was lower than usual in the fall 2020 with the COVID situation? Or is it just?
Great question. That's a, that's a wonderful question. So unlike our traditional school setting, that is anywhere between 180, 185 days, the WAY High School is open for students all year long. So we actually had six students attend lab today in person and a number that were attending virtually. So the increase, my guess, is because it's from June, July, August, which is recommended and we want students to be engaged, but we also are very understanding of students that have jobs or may have to watch siblings during the summer, and they might not be able to participate as much as they want to during those few summer months. So really, if we look at September, October, November, I think those three months would be even more than the couple months in the summer. So I'm thinking that that increases that. And because we have more staff on hand throughout the year, we're intentionally reaching out to students, especially with, you know, everything with COVID, we're really wanting to keep tabs on kids. If they're not logging in, we're calling them to find out why not.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Gooing. Thank you for highlighting the work that Steve Wheeler was doing with you guys. I see in very small print on that last slide that he recommends a full-time, and I recognize, right, if I'm correct, that he's also employed at the middle school, and so he was probably splitting his, his time. Is there a way that we can support? He's, you know, he recommends here a full-time for the WAY Oasis. Is that something we can, we can accomplish on our end?
Yeah. So we're working on, as Kim alluded to, you will likely this evening be approving his resignation. So we will post that position. Every year since we've had the Project Aware Program, we have moved counselors and tried to determine where the best fit is and the best support is for a number of students. So although it's amazing to have five more counselors, it didn't give us the luxury of having a full-time person in every building. And so we have to really look at those resources. But the short answer to your question is that we'll reassess where those counselors are assigned, as we have every year, but even this year, a little bit more so because we'll have to hire someone to replace Steve. So that position will be posted, I believe, after this evening. Is that right, Linda? Yeah. It's not posted yet.
And I, and I should add too, if I, if I can just interject, that our WAY Program is a Monday through Thursday program. Historically, the kids, not our middle school, but the high school students would have the opportunity to come Friday until noon. But this year, because of COVID, we earmarked four 10-hour days so that we could fit in three separate lab times with cleaning times in between. So hopefully, we could accommodate many different schedules. So, you know, even a five-day-a-week counselor would not be necessarily needed because we don't really have a ton of students on Fridays in the building.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Does anyone have any other questions for Kim?
I would just, once again, thank you for everything that this WAY team does, the graduates, and predicting and getting so close. That's why I need to.
We saw a number of stu-, well, I should say that on the day of graduation, Thursday, so I had to redo the program the, several times, but in my office, which is, if anybody knows, across the building from the WAY High School lab, and our doors are always closed, I heard a student do a hip, hip, hooray because he finished a geometry class that got him the credits that he needed to be able to walk that night in graduation. So that was amazing. So right up to the very last minute, kids were plugging away, and staff were right there cheering them on.
And I will just add, it was a very, very nice, very warm graduation ceremony with the warmth of the families and the people there because it was a freezing night. But thank you for that ceremony. It was a great celebration of their successes.
And, and we had lots of people that say this might be the new home of the community ed and WAY Oasis High School graduation because it was very lovely and seemed to be very fitting and very relaxed atmosphere for our families. So thank you.
I agree. It was beautiful. Thank you.
That's the end of the Reports and Updates section this evening.
Okay, next is the Consent Agenda. So under the Consent Agenda is the approval of minutes for the May 17th, 2021 regular meeting and the May 17th, 2021 closed session. Is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
I'm moving that we approve the meeting minutes under the Consent Agenda.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That passes unanimously. Next is New Business with the Southwest Food Service Excellence Contract Renewal.
Ginger will cover this for us this evening. Thank you.
You have in front of you an approval letter from MDE approving our, our next one-year contract renewal. It's kind of backwards in that we have to get their approval before we get your approval. This is the second of four allowable one-year contract extensions with our food service company, Southwest Food Service Excellence. It does reflect a 2% increase for the management fee and the administrative fee, which is in the contract, the original contract that we signed. So that's, that's right on target. And I will interject that last year's extension, they did not charge us an increase. They kept that fee flat from the, from the first year. So just to interject that, and this is, like I said, a one-year approval for the 2021, 2022 school year to continue our partnership with SFE.
I'm moving that we approve the contract extension for Southwest Food Service as recommended.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes unanimously. Next is the 2021 Tax Rate Request.
Thank you for that. Next in front of you, you have the 2021 Tax Request. This allows us to levy taxes on our taxpayers to pay for our operational mileage and for our debt mileage. I'm requesting with the help of a bunch of people, our financial advisors, our legal counsel. There's a lot of people behind all of this data. But we're requesting that we levy a total of six mils on commercial personal property, a total of 18 mils on all other property for operations, 1.36 mils for the 2007 debt, 2.12 mils for the 2016 debt, and .05 mils for the 2020 debt. These requests are asking you to levy half of these mils in the summer for the city of Mount Pleasant and half in the winter for the city of Mount Pleasant. All other townships in our area would levy 100% of these taxes on their winter levies.
Is there any questions for Ginger regarding the tax rate request? Is there a motion to pass that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes then the 2021 Tax Rate Request. Next is Resignations. Linda?
Good evening. We do have a lengthy list of resignations, and it may look a little alarming, but I just want to reassure the board that there's often quite a happy story for many of these individuals as they head off to reconnect with family or other, other adventures in their young lives with significant others. So we wish all these folks the best of luck, and we're sad to see them go. Hillary DiMaggio, first grade at Vowles. Karen Kimble, special education at the high school. Michaela Crowell, health and PE at the high school. Jamie Morgan, school social worker at the middle school. Alexis Paquette, speech and language, language pathologist at the high school. Kristy Voels, science and special education at the high school. And Stephen Wheeler, counselor for the district, most recently at WAY Oasis.
And we are very sad to see any of those teachers leave, but we wish them well. Is there a motion to pass the resignation of Hillary DiMaggio, Karen Kimble, Michaela Crowell, Jamie Morgan, Alexis Paquette, Kristy Voels, and Stephen Wheeler? All moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that unanimously passes. Good luck to everyone on their future endeavors. Next is the New Hires.
Yes, we're excited to bring on board Alexandria Visner as a special education for the district. We believe she will be placed at Fancher Elementary. And also Garrett Wenglikowski. We're excited to bring on Garrett as a machines trade instructor at GI Tech.
Is there a motion to welcome Ms. Visner and Mr. Wenglikowski onto the staff with Mount Pleasant Public Schools?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? And that unanimously passes as well. Thank you for joining our district. Next is the Student Discipline Recommendation for student S2 2022, 2021.
In your board packets this evening, you do have a recommendation from the Student Reinstatement Committee. This is slightly different due to the format of our board meetings. We had our Student Reinstatement Committee meet with the student to make a discipline recommendation instead of having the student come before the board. So you see the rationale. We are hoping that this student will be able to participate in our summer school programming and then transition into the WAY Program and then transition back to school at Mount Pleasant Middle School. So Dana was a part of that meeting, as was, it was Amy, yes, I wasn't sure if it was you or Sheila, but. So they are here to answer questions if need be, but we are recommending that the student be permitted to attend the summer school program and then transition into the WAY Program.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion to recommend what we have in front of us regarding student S2 2021, 20, or 2020, 2021?
So moved. Second.
Okay. All, sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that unanimously passes. Next will be the ISD Budget and Agenda that we will hear from Mr. Oderkirk.
As you all may remember, we approved the election of two new board members. And so I was asked to go to the official vote and taking care of the vote of this board to the ISD for the election. The end was Matthew Showalter received seven votes and Julie Pierce received six votes. They were the only two running for the two positions at the intermediate school district. The continuation of the meeting was regarding the budget for the ISD. Again, as we all know, that was presented to us for approval before it goes to the ISD. This meeting was actually the ISD's board's presentation of that information that which we received. They did not approve it yet, but they will be. In general, just to summation, there is a mils to be levied, which is 0.2640 for general fund, special education, which is 4.2, and vocational education, which is one, for a total of 5.4640. Mils will be leveraged on our communities that go toward the intermediate school district. The total revenues being brought into the ISD are $5,625,083 for next year's budget. They are actually in the end going to be going slightly over and going into their reserves slightly, about $70,000, so not that big of a deal. One thing to note, if you want more details, I can go through some more of the details, I can go through some more of the details, but a lot of it, we've already been presented. Kevin Cole came and talked to us about this already. They have, it seems like a large fund balance. We've talked about this in the past. It's approximately 50%. However, they need to have a lot of cash on hand because there's a lot of programming that they do that it takes a very long time for them to get reimbursed for that programming. So for example, all the Michigan Works goes through them. And so they have to pay all of Michigan Works, and it takes the state almost an entire year to reimburse them for the work that they did. So they need to have more cash on hand to be able to deliver some of the programs that they're doing. Again, that was everything. So that was presented to their board for their questions, and I'm assuming it'll be approved at their next board meeting. But that is a summation of the meeting. So there was seven districts. I think there were just two districts that did not have representation at the, this special meeting that they have for this activity. But everyone else was there. It was very nice to see everyone. So that is everything. Any questions? Thank you.
Next is the citizens' request to address the board on any agenda or non-agenda items. Just because we do have new or more people in the audience, I just want to remind everybody that you are given three minutes. I do have the yellow list that people initially signed up on. I will be calling you in order to come up and address the board, but you can come up here to the microphone and do so. If you have not signed in already, please make sure that you do so. There is another yellow sheet up there that you can continue to sign in on. And when you approach the microphone, please state your name and what city that you currently live in or where you are from. And so also, just as a reminder, this is an opportunity to address the board. The board will hear your statement, and it is then entered into public comment or public record. This is not a time that the board or that the board will respond to anything that you say at this time. So with that--
Three minutes.
Okay. Yep. And just as a reminder, it is three minutes. Mr. Otter Kirk will be the timekeeper. He will give you the warning at three minutes. Thank you. And to wrap up at that time, not-- or first, we're going to start with Kathy Willermet.
Members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to comment. My name is Kathy Willermet, and I am a Mount Pleasant resident, a parent of two high school students, an anthropology faculty at CMU, and a proud American. I must speak out in favor of teaching critical thinking to our students, including critical thinking about our country's history. I think some people are using the terms heritage, history, and patriotism as if they are the same thing. They're not. Heritage is something acquired by birth or birthright. It's a part of us. History is a record of events interpreted by people who try to understand their meaning and significance. Patriotism is love for one's country. We can teach American heritage as a set of values, characteristics, like hospitality or freedom, and we can be proud of those. But it's not American history. History is messy and full of mistakes people have made. I love my children, but I do not love them blindly. If I did, I would not see all their human strengths and weaknesses. I love them with the fierceness of wanting them to become the best people they can be, and I encourage them to grow to their potential. How can I help them grow? By encouraging them to think critically about the situations and the people they encounter, to think critically about their own actions. If they make a mistake, they should consider how to do better next time. If all, it's all I can ask of them. Try to do well and do better if you can. It's what I want for my kids. It's what we all want for our kids. I also love my country, but I do not love it blindly. If I did, I would not see America's strengths and weaknesses. I love America with the fierceness of wanting it to be the best country it can be, and I encourage America to grow to its potential. How can I help America grow? By encouraging all our citizens to think critically about the world they encounter, to think critically about our own actions. If we make a mistake, we should consider how to do better next time. It's all I can ask of us. Try to do well and do better if we can. This is how we need to study our American history. Think critically about our actions. The phrase "those who don't study history are doomed to repeat it" means we have to study it critically. What was the best we could have done? Was that the best? How can we do better next time? Otherwise, we'll say, okay, studied the Civil War, glad that won't ever happen again, without really understanding that the same issues that brought neighbors to war with each other are still around us now. We've made lots of mistakes that have harmed our black and brown neighbors. Critical thinking skills, including critical race theory, help us to ask, how can we do better? It's only by asking and answering these questions that we can be truly patriotic and love our country. Thank you.
Next is Amy Ford.
Hello. My name is Amy Ford. I am the proud parent of a student at Mount Pleasant Middle School, sixth grader going into seventh grade. And I would like to take this opportunity to commend the board, the school leaders, and the educators in Mount Pleasant for the decisions that were made during this challenging year of this pandemic that probably saved lives. So I want to take first a moment to commend you for that. And then I'd also like to share some of my daughter's experiences because it is on her behalf that I am here speaking to you today. She loved her classrooms where she was able to engage in debates about current issues, where she was able to learn about the experiences and perspectives of people who were different from her, where she got hands-on learning opportunities, where music was played to create a soothing and enjoyable learning environment for all of the students, where she was able to learn new strategies for learning that developed her confidence, particularly in math. And the thing that she loved most about this school year was the cohort model, where she could be in classrooms where a community was built of friends that she says created friendships that will endure for her. Now, during this challenging year, it's pretty amazing that she had such a positive learning experience in school. There are some things, though, in the spirit of the previous speaker that I think we can look at and do better. And I think this is a really amazing opportunity for us to take stock of what we're doing and reinvent education going forward to create an even more equitable and inclusive learning environment for all of our students. So in that spirit, I pose the question, what have we learned from this pandemic that will endure going forward? And how can we make our classrooms even more inclusive and equitable in the spirit of critical thinking? So for instance, in two English classes that she had, every book and text, pretty much every book that she read was written by white authors with white protagonists. Granted, some of this may be due to limitations of access to text during a pandemic. So my question is, going forward, how will she have access to curriculum that engages her in exploring differences? Differences around racial and ethnic identities, experiences, immigration status, refugee status, family, gender, sexuality, all of the different arrays of the richness of diversity that we have in our country and that students bring to the table in terms of their own identities. How can we also support them in engaging these debates based on factual information and the critical thinking to evaluate sources of information so as they engage in discussion and debate, they are grounding it in knowledge that is shared among us while engaging with their own experiences and listening to others?
You've had three minutes. Could you please wrap up your comments?
I can. Thank you so much for hearing me and also the voice of my daughter, who helped me come up with this presentation.
Thank you. Next is Bree Morgenberg.
Don't start my time yet. I'm not ready. Okay, my name's Bree Morgenberg. I'm from Mount Pleasant. Piggybacking off from this, we just talked about the pandemic. And I want to say, we all know where the numbers sit on the pandemic because you know that I talked about this a lot and a lot and a lot. The first thing in regards to that, thank you. You all lifted the quarantine that was excessive for close contact, and that was amazing. There are so many other schools that have done that across the state. Can I get an OP? Yes. Recently in Kent County, just last week, the mask mandate was released from the school agers. And in regards to this, I want to tell you that I have spoken the last two days to Steve Hall. Steve Hall, if you're not aware, is the Central Michigan District Health Department Health Officer. So in regards to number seven, in regards to the epidemic orders as implementation under MCL 333.2253, local health departments are authorized to carry out and enforce the terms of this order. What does it mean to authorize and give somebody authorization? That means the permission is granted to them, and they have the power to carry that through. I am going to provide this information to you. Steve Hall said, as a health officer, he does have the authority to issue a local emergency public health order if warranted. That authority comes from the public health code. Currently, however, are you ready for this? We do not currently have any local orders in our jurisdiction. I think this is something that's worthy to look into, and I ask you to do that. The summer months are here, extended learning is here, kids are in the PEAK program. These kids need to get their masks off.
Thank you.
Thank you. Furthermore, for insight, please note that your bylaws state that you do declare and reaffirm your intent to maintain two-way communication with citizens of the district, and that you shall keep them and enforce them of the progressive problems of the district, and that citizens shall be urged to bring their aspirations and concerns about the district to the attention of this body. I am aspired to two-way communicate with you. Would you all like two-way communication?
Yes.
I know that there are several people that are sitting out here that have the same-- whoa. The same reference as me and the things that I speak on. And two-way communication with this board has sadly been really, really hard to get. I can message other school districts and very quickly get a response. I consider it to be passive bullying when I am ignored. And you all know that I have tried since the beginning to talk to you, to inquire, to get questions, because I want to know where the board is sitting so that I can provide information that supports where I am at and the beliefs that I have. And I think that that's fair. But where this board stands, you have pushed people to the point that we have to be loud to be heard. And that's not what anybody wants to do. However, we do want to be heard, right?
Yes.
Yes. Furthermore, at this time, I ask for all of the times that you have ignored my correspondence, including my daughter's father, to acknowledge me. I want to be acknowledged. This is my daughter's school board. This is her district. It is the district of everyone out here. You don't have to agree with me. You have to listen to me. You have to hear me. And I have tried to work with you. All I want to do is to be able to provide information that supports where I am.
You've had three minutes. Please wrap up your comments.
Yes, I will do that. From this point forward, it has been noted when I am not responded to, and I will continue to do that. And it's not because I want to, it's because I want to work with you. And you've all talked about having a parent forum, and I would like to see you move towards that. And I would like to know where you stand afterwards on making sure that we have a parent forum. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ceelee Bush.
Hi. My name is Ceelee. I'm a high school student, a senior, going into my senior year here at MPHS. I, I love learning about history, but I want to learn like real history. I don't want to learn like--
I'm sorry to interrupt. Ceelee, would you mind taking your mask down? I can't understand.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
I, I just want to learn the real history that is not glossed over. And I made a petition for family members, community members, but most importantly, fellow students who wanted to say that they also want to learn real history. I got over 250 signatures in just about three days, so.
And basically, they just said, we, we want to learn real history. We're not afraid of learning about the role that we play, especially as people who have been privileged throughout our whole lives in supporting institutions that divide us and have divided us for way too long. We learn that we're going to make a difference if we learn. We're old enough
to understand it's not going to be indoctrination of the youth to just learn the facts. It's essential to discuss complicated subjects like police brutality towards people of color if we want to build a better future for everyone. We can't let people who it doesn't decide, like doesn't affect decide what we learn about. Students deserve to have our voices heard and what we want to learn because we're the future, and we're not going to make the future like our past.
Thank you. Next is Cindy Poole.
My name is Cindy Poole. I've been a resident of Mount Pleasant for many years. I want to thank you for this opportunity to talk to you today. And I'm calling upon you, the board, for your wisdom, your common sense, and help. I'm calling upon myself to take action and duty to my community and state and nation. I'm calling upon the people that are in here in our community in Mount Pleasant to become active and aware of what their students and children are learning. I am alarmed by the racial program called critical race theory. I strongly urge our, our school district not to teach this illegal false doctrine. Committing racial discrimination and the nature of ending racial discrimination is illogical and illegal. You can't solve discrimination with reverse discrimination. Schools and other government entities and employers are engaging in activities as civil rights violations, and these include racial segregation, stereotyping, and racial scapegoating, forcing students to admit so-called privilege as a sign blame from one race against another, and to punish those refusing to do so, forcing individuals to reflect, deconstruct, and confront their racial identity, including statements to be less white. We would have lost a proverbial mind if we would have said that of black, brown, Asian, or Indians. Asking students and employees to engage or not engage with the class in a specific manner based on race. Training exercises, assignments, forcing students and employees to admit, accept, affirm, or support controversial concepts, racial privilege, culpability, identity, or status. This constitutes compelled, compelled speech, which is a legal term when the person is required to utter, otherwise express, a thought which they disagree with. Critical race theory is programming and the name of anti-racism. It perpetuates and glorifies racial stereotyping and division in a way that violates law. It violates the Fourteenth Amendment of our Constitution. It violates the Civil Rights Act of 1964. Let me give you a brief understanding of what the Fourteenth Amendment says. No state shall deny any person within its jurisdiction equal protections. And the Civil Rights Act says-- you can't discriminate against any race.
You've had your three minutes. Could you please wrap up your comments?
Yes, thank you. What should a student do if they're a victim of illegal discrimination by CRT? They need to file complaint with the Department of Civil Rights. If their equal protection clause is violated, parents may file a lawsuit directly against the school or file a complaint with the U.S. Department of Education. Employees that are violated should file complaint to the Equal Opportunity Commission
You've had your three minutes. Could you please wrap up your comments?
And the Department of Civil Rights. Thank you.
Next is Dawn Becca.
Hi, my name's Dawn Becca. I live here in Mount Pleasant. I own a home. So I'm a taxpayer, so I have a right to be here and talk about what kind of board and decisions that are made because I pay taxes to the school, whether my children are here or not. I don't understand this kind of teaching that is going on right now, this critical race theory. I was married to a black man for 35 years. My children are biracial. And they are being taught that their white side is bad. Are you kidding me? I'm just as good as my husband. I didn't see color when I married that man. I saw the person. And that's what we taught our children. And you know, my children did not receive any kind of discrimination over the last, you know, my son is going to be 28 this year. And this was not an issue raising my children. And now it is. You are teaching children to hate themselves just because they're white. We are not guilty of what our forefathers did. Yes, it was wrong. Slavery was wrong. There is still slavery today in China. The Uighurs are slaves. Are we teaching our children about that? You're spending way too much time teaching them things that they don't need to deal with. Yes, history is important. We've already repeated it. We're repeating a lot of the things that happened in Nazi Germany. And we don't need to do that. Anti-Semitism is on the rise all over the world. Why aren't we teaching about that? You know, I'm just appalled at that anybody thinks that the 1619 Project is history. That shouldn't be taught either. There is real history out there. And there are good writers, black, white, brown, whatever color. And you know, apparently, none of you got the memo. Dr. Falsy says masks don't work.
Thank you. Next up is Valerie Olson.
Bree Morgenberg, on behalf of Valerie Olson, Director of the Wellness Center of Marquette. My name is Valerie Olson. I am a health professional of over 25 years and the Director of the Wellness Center of Marquette in Marquette, Michigan. I am addressing you concerning the issue of masking our children while they attend school. I have received countless phone calls from parents of children who are being forced to wear masks during the school day. And they are suffering from migraines and other headaches, anxiety, dizziness, and difficulty concentrating, all of which are signs of oxygen deprivation. Hundreds of medical doctors have come forward to state that this practice is harmful to our children because their brains are much more active than adult brains and have an even higher need for optimal oxygen levels. These levels are compromised by wearing the mask for hours at a time. You are called to seek the truth regarding this issue and to listen to those medical doctors who have no conflict of interest and not the mainstream media, which is highly controlled by the drug and tech industries. Here is a quote from Dr. Margarita Bryson, a leading London neurologist who was a medical consultant in the UK, Germany, Switzerland, and the United States. Quote, "Oxygen deprivation is dangerous for every single brain of children. Masks are absolutely harmful. Children and adolescents have an extremely active brain that is thirsty for oxygen. To deprive a child's brain of oxygen or even to restrict this is absolutely criminal. The damage cannot be reversed. This is simple and indisputable physiology and the forcing of masking has deliberately caused health hazard. This should not be allowed to be used. Common masks and even N95 masks will not protect you from viruses which are far smaller than these masks will keep out." Unquote. An additional harmful effect of masking, mask-wearing is the rebreathing of carbon dioxide, which is intended to be exhaled by the human body. Levels of this toxic gas inside cloth or disposable mask will reach dangerous levels according to OSHA guidelines within minutes, as I myself have proven by using an OSHA-approved CO2 meter. I am urging each of you, as those who are called to oversee the well-being of our children through your position on the school board, to take action that will ensure the ending of the practice of masking our children during school. You have the parents to end policies which are harmful to them and which do not have any proven prevention in the transmission of infection. The CDC stated last August that they have no evidence as to the benefit of healthy people wearing masks and there are no studies to date to prove its benefits. We can continue the policy of keeping sick children home. Our children must not continue to be harmed from this unsafe practice. I am urging you to act in the best interest of our children and make policies that are based on science and nothing less. This is your calling as a school board. Please do no less. Valerie Olson.
Thank you. Next is Tanya Morris.
My name is Tanya. I live in Mount Pleasant here. I wanted to talk to you about my son, who's a seventh grader. He goes to the middle school. And he came to me at the end of April and stated he was getting an F in his ELA class because he chose not to discuss particular topics that were LGBTQ. I emailed this teacher and asked about these discussions, some of which she denied. I'm sorry, I'm really nervous and upset over this. Some of the discussions were LGBTQ in schools, the state of American prison system, racial inequality in the criminal justice system, addressing disparities, the gender gap and U.S. mortality, vaccine inequality, murder in missing Indigenous women, criminal justice facts, statistics, race and gender, and the gender gap. My son is 13. He didn't even know what these things meant. But he was given an F for his lack of participation. In this paper that I give you, she states, this teacher, "The biggest mistake that is made early on is lack of participation. If a student doesn't participate in the discussion, then I have no way of assessing the skill." There is no skill in talking about someone's sexuality. None. If I were to go into your home, if I were to go into your children's bedroom and I were to ask them of their sexuality or tell me how they felt, there's something wrong with me. It's perversion. For an adult to ask a minor, my child, what they think of this, their thoughts and their feelings, something is wrong. This is not an ELA class. There is an agenda. This last paper, she wants to know, keeping track of thoughts on all those topics. So say he writes his thoughts, then what? Then what does she get to do with them? What if later he says, "What now, Mom? What if I change my mind now? How could this be used against my child?" This made him feel horrible. The second paper states, from an excerpt from the NCTE Position Statement, "As English teachers, we understand the awesome power of language to shape our school and classroom environment." You're damn right she did. Because he brought it home to me upset. My son shouldn't have to be shaped in these forms at all. No one got my consent. Nobody. Nobody asked me if this curriculum was okay. Nobody. I don't... I don't want my son to treat anyone bad. And that's the truth. No matter their race, what they look like, how tall they are, how short they are, the color of their mask. He has no right to treat anybody different. But we don't seem to be teaching that. We seem to be treating kids to learn oppression and division. I hold this teacher...
You've had your three minutes. Could you please wrap up your comments?
Yes, thank you. I hold this teacher responsible. I hope you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Stacy Pratt. Oh, I'm sorry, Stacy Pratt?
Good afternoon. My name is Stacy Pratt from Mount Pleasant. My comments today are, we don't want a complaint department. We want what should be discussion inclusion. We do want every child to feel equally as important in their individuality. Every child to be raised with, raised up without oppression, oppressing others. Every child to recognize that we are the human race. The quality of education we want for the children is pro-friendship, not anti-bullying. Unity, not division. Equality, not racism. Critical thinking, not conformity. Empowerment for all, not disengagement and oppression. Empathy, not sympathy. Problem-solving, not blame. Excellence, not insignificance. Love, not hate. God created each of us. He created me as a white female. I have a white male son. They do not. They will not be forced to lower who they have been created as. They will be happy to help lift others by lifting in love, not by oppressing themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jessica Lapp.
Hello, my name is Jessica Lapp. I'm a resident of Union Township and I have a son in the high school. There's something ironic about beginning this meeting with the recognition of the land taken from the Yenishanabi people and then having a comment period where people argue about teaching our kids about this history that it's somehow a bad idea for the kids to learn about this. They're calling this brainwashing. Refusing to teach the history of this county and this country, that is brainwashing. Let our teachers teach critical thinking. This is an invaluable skill for our kids to be better thinkers, better workers, better people. And critical race theory is one way to introduce critical thinking about race and its impact on U.S. history and our current society. This theory challenges us to consider the ways in which American institutions perpetuate racism and challenges us to rethink and revise those institutions and to listen to the individual voices asking for freedom and equality through the last almost 250 years of the United States of America. That's what critical race theory is and it's not some scary new idea. People have been doing similar kinds of critiques for years. This is the continuing evolution of U.S. society and democratic thought. When Thomas Jefferson wrote, "All men are created equal," he did not mean that all people were created equal. He specifically meant white male property owners. Women were property at that time. Slaves were property. Indentured servants were property. We Americans continue to revise our thinking about equality and justice and liberty and freedom. And we continue to challenge those original ideas of what being equal means. That is growth. That is education. Indoctrination and brainwashing don't come from teaching critical thinking and critical race theory. They come from refusing to engage in new ideas or ideas you disagree with. Education is about new ideas and those who see education as a threat because of these new ideas should not be on the school board making decisions about educational policies and curriculum. We want our kids to be competitive contributors to the present and to the future. Racism is an issue we must discuss.
Thank you. Next is Stacy Pointexter.
I'm a little nervous. My name's Stacy Pointexter. I'm a resident of Mount Pleasant. I went to like the public schools here. My siblings went here. And first off, I want to start out, how many of you guys are Reagan fans? Just by a hand, show of hands. Okay, don't have to answer that because we all know the answer. But I just want to start by saying a quote from Lee Atwater, which will kind of define how race has kind of been viewed in the past, say, four years. You start out in 1954 by saying, I'm not going to say it, "N-word, N-word, N-word." By 1968, you can't say the N-word. That hurts you. It backfires. So you say stuff like forced busing, states' rights, and all that stuff. And you're getting so abstract. Now you're talking about cutting taxes and all these things you're talking about are totally economic things and a byproduct of them is blacks get hurt worse than whites. This was Reagan and the first Bush's campaign advisor. This is the basis of the Southern Strategy. This is the basis of a lot of how race is viewed in America as of now. Because there are people that think we shouldn't view race as like part of our identity, I guess. They want to believe that things are colorblind. By being colorblind, you are refusing a part of someone's identity. I am biracial. I am proud of that. I am proud of both my sides. But I know that one side is not being taught as much as the other. And I know it's being denied that because they're saying, "Things have changed." Things have not changed. Did you know that the average black household in America has 1/16th of the wealth of the average white family? 1/16th. And that was from 2016. There's the school-to-prison pipeline that is still happening. There is, there is like, sorry, I'm kind of blanking. I'm a little nervous. I'm kind of like winging this. There is so much that has gone on since the Reagan administration, so on, that has further divided us. And if we do not recognize that, if we do not recognize the past and how it has affected us today, there is no way that we can get past that. There is absolutely no way. And if you are denying part of that, you're denying learning about these issues, all you're saying is you're looking every single person of color, every black, brown, like Indigenous person. You are telling them that I do not care if you are part of these statistics. I do not care if you're going, you not care about them. You do not want to move forward, you know? It's not about dividing people. It's about recognizing who does not have the same rights, who does not have the same privileges, who does not have the same resources as us. And what can we do in our communities to help lift them up? Help get them away from that 1/16th amount of wealth? It's just ridiculous. And I don't understand why people would even like think that is something that we shouldn't learn about because the laws that are in place right now have not helped. The prison population, when Reagan went into office, was 350,000. By the time he was out of office, it had doubled to almost 700,000. You know what it is right now? 2.3 million in 40 years. It should not be that high. There are people that are being ripped from their families, ripped from their children. Their children, they don't have a parent. They don't have a right to go to school. How are they going to get an education? You know, these kids are fighting for their families.
You've had your three minutes. Could you please wrap up your comments?
We need to discuss this so that we can have change. We cannot continue to go on like this. And that's all I really have to say.
Next is Michael Heitman.
Can I just say something really quick? That we keep the everything here civil. Be kind to each other, please.
Hi, my name is Michael, excuse me. My name is Michael Heitman. I'm a resident of Union Township. I'm concerned with how uncontroversial tools used by teachers are becoming such a weird problem to some. I'm grateful for the efforts and difficult but deliberate decision-making by the board for this previous year, and hope that they don't concern themselves with conspiracies cooked up by those unconcerned for our district and any other district, for that matter. As you've heard from others tonight, the idea of critical theory is not controversial. It's not some shadow program to indoctrinate kids into whatever it is they think they're being indoctrinated into. We live right next to wonderful resources here with CMU. If the board really wants to better understand what critical theory is and how the educators of this district utilize it. It's still a learning process for me, as I've been out of school for quite a while now, and honestly, wasn't aware of this until this only became a big issue to some people very recently. As the grandson and son of teachers from the area here, I hope the board knows that the district has some amazing educators that they can trust and work with to further the education of the kids of Mount Pleasant Public Schools. Also, a shout out to the teachers of the Mount Pleasant Community Way Oasis Program for a wonderful graduation ceremony they had. They had quite a successful year this year. So, thank you.
Next is Edward Clayton. Edward Clayton? Nope, that's fine.
Hello, my name is Edward Clayton. I'm a resident of Mount Pleasant. I want to start by thanking the students especially who came out here tonight to take an active part in determining the policies of their schools, the content of their learning. I'm very encouraged by that. It gives me hope for the future. I teach at Central Michigan. I'm on the faculty there. I wanted to clear up a couple of misunderstandings about critical race theory, if I could. Critical race theory is not about teaching self-hate. It is not about teaching people that they are at fault for things that have happened in the past, but it does encourage people to say that they are responsible for what is going on now. So if we can look at, for example, our Native American friends and neighbors. If you look at statistics about reservations, you find that they have much higher levels of sexual assault, alcoholism, substance abuse, obesity, poverty. These communities are, we, they are, I'm trying to think of the right word here. Did these problems then, so we ask them, okay, where do these problems come from? Why do we see these problems among these communities? And if we look at history, and if we look at history through the lens of race, and if we look at history critically, we learn about things like dispossession from land, we learn about genocide, we learn about the boarding schools, like the one that we have here in town. There was one in Canada, I don't know how many of you saw this, just this week, they discovered over 200 bodies of children in an unmarked grave. So what critical race theory says is that if you want to understand the conditions that people are living in today, you have to look at our history of racism in this country, and we have to look at it systematically. What are the institutions that we've created? What are the decisions that we've made that have led to where we are today? And we don't ask students to take responsibility for the genocide or for the boarding schools, but we ask them to take responsibility for addressing the consequences of those acts and deciding what are they going to do? Right? So now you know something about the way that racism has operated in this country. What are you going to do about it? That's all. Take responsibility. You can't have, you can't end division by silencing people. You cannot change history by ignoring it. I want to say one other thing, and I'm sorry, this is a little disjointed, because I was taking notes on the fly here. But I do want to assure people that their kids know about this. Their kids are learning about this on the internet. They're learning about it in all kinds of other ways.
You've had your three minutes. Could you please wrap up your comments?
Yes, thank you. And we've seen this tonight, especially in the last speaker who spoke much better than I'm speaking now, about these issues and how important they are. Thank you.
Next is John Chiudini. John Chiudini?
My name is John Chiudini. A resident here for probably 30 years, minimally. Both my sons went to school here. I've coached here. I have grandchildren going to school right now. Earlier today, by the grace of God, I was reading the Epoch Times, and there was an article here about critical race theory. And I read it, and I'm going to read some excerpts to you, because we talk about it in very ambiguous kind of terms. And this is from Williamson County, Tennessee. It's written by Roger Simon. Williamson County, never heard of it? What's the big deal? Well, a lot. Williamson County, Tennessee, is what you might call Republican heaven, just south of Democratic stronghold Nashville, much of its gorgeous suburbs, home to the likes of country star Luke Bryan of American Idol fame, and a 150-acre estate, and Senator Marsha Blackburn. I had lunch the other day with two Williamson women who have formed that county's branch of a new movement for parental rights, mostly focused on schools called Moms for Liberty. Their chapter's growing even faster than Williamson County itself, because they and many others are angry about what's going on in those very schools, you might say furious. Many think our country is already changing rapidly in front of our eyes, but nowhere is it changing more rapidly and in a Marxist direction than in our schools. Critical race theory, the concept that we are all permanently defined by our skin color and not our character, has been in schools for years in an only slightly covert manner. In March 2020, the Williamson County School Board adopted a curriculum called Wit and Wisdom, which consists of seemingly harmless things published by an outfit named Great Minds LLC. Here is only a sample of what Williamson second graders, seven- and eight-year-olds, are in force starting in August with Wit and Wisdom. As you look at this, remember, this is the curriculum and manner through which, for months, these children are being taught reading, writing, arithmetic, science, history, civics, art, music, and so forth. This is lesson one. Number one, point out the word injustice. Number two, explain that unfair and injustice mean the same thing. Three, injustice is a stronger word. Four, explain how real people respond to injustice. Five, explore the word injustice. Six, reread how real people respond to injustice. Leave posted references throughout the module. Seven, echo-read what injustices did people face before the Civil Rights Act of 1964. Eight, point to the word injustice. Nine, remind the class of the meaning of the word injustice. Ten, explain, read, people fighting injustice. Show students the images. What do you notice about the images? Share observations. Eleven, remind the meaning of injustice.
You've had three minutes. Please wrap up your comments.
Can I read number 12? This is the last one. Develop a non-verbal signal for injustice. Okay. Carol?
Thank you.
Carol's the next person. Okay, read this here, and then read this here.
Okay, but I have something else I want to say.
Okay.
This was all not planned. My name is Carol Gall, and I am a resident of Lincoln Township in the Mount Pleasant School District. And my children went to Mount Pleasant School District for elementary, and then we transferred them to Shepherd for their high school years. And I do have grandchildren now in the Mount Pleasant School District. So one of the things in this article that we were reading, it was that there's a recent, surprisingly well-attended Moms for Liberty meeting in Franklin, at which immigrant woman from Thailand married to a Caucasian spoke. She read aloud a lengthy heartfelt letter she wrote to Williamson County Schools Superintendent about the severe educational and emotional disturbances her mixed-race seven-year-old son suffered from attending one of the schools. To his parents' consternation, the boy ended up despising his white half. Now, I'm not going to read the rest of this, because I need to speak from my heart. I'm a 60-year-old woman. When I grew up in the Detroit area, okay? And I grew up in Taylor, Michigan. We were right next door to Inkster. And so here's some history for everybody, okay? During that time, I think I'm probably older than most of you up here, during that time, I went through what they called desegregation, okay? So they bust in a whole bunch of people of color, we call them. At that time, they called themselves blacks, and we called ourselves whites, and we were all good with that, okay? They bust them into my school in the ninth grade. I went all the way from ninth grade in junior high to high school. We graduated together. Some of us are still friends, believe it or not. We're still friends. And we are all sick about everything that we're seeing, because all of the advancement that was made way back when, 45 years ago, is what now? It's regressed. It's ridiculous. I can't even believe the things that I hear around here and in this school district. And I'm telling my daughter, don't you send our grandchildren here. Our little tiny children shouldn't even be talking about this. They're not responsible for anything in second grade. They're responsible for learning. It's up to the adults to take care of these problems, not the children.
Thank you. Next is Andrea McKinney.
Okay, so I was told it was five minutes, so we'll see how this goes. And I'm going to talk really fast so I can get through this. And I guess I can see from here. So I'm Andrea McKinney. I'm a community member, a grandmother of nine grandchildren. Tonight, I am addressing the entertainment of mandatory COVID vaccines in our student body. You may not be considering this action currently, however, I am sharing to help you proactively with your due diligence on this topic. There is currently 1,000 lawyers and 10,000 medical experts springing class-action lawsuit against the CDC, which is not a government agency, the WHO, who is controlled by eugenicist Bill Gates and the Davos Group, for crimes against humanity. How so? First, we must acknowledge the so-called COVID vaccine from any company, any company, does not qualify as a vaccine by medical standards. There are five criteria the COVID vaccine fails at. It does not provide immunity. It does not prevent the disease. It does not reduce death. It does not reduce circulation of said virus. It does not reduce transmission from person to person. In fact, currently, double-vaxxed people, double-vaxxed, make up 60% of the ER and ICU admissions for COVID. Using common sense, do you think the injection is working? This week, many of us citizens who are doing due diligence for humanity were vindicated by the Freedom of Information Act release of Dr. Fauci's emails. Despite what the spin mass media put on the event, his emails clearly defined COVID-19 was a man-made bioweapon released from a bioweapon lab in China produced by an USA banned research called gain-of-function gene therapy. That alone should stop us all in our tracks. What kind of war is this? If these mad scientists produce a bioweapon against humanity, what are they willing to include in the vaccine that is coercively being pushed on humanity now? Please think about that. I came here to help you understand you could personally be charged for a crime if you voted for mandatory vaccines in our tax-based school system. After the travesty against humanity called the Holocaust during World War II, where millions were exterminated and inhumanely experimented on by mad scientists, a code of medical ethics was established called the Nuremberg Code. This code defines activities that are considered crimes against humanity. The experimental injection itself is a violation of Article 32 of the Geneva Convention, which states mutilation in medical or scientific experiments not necessitated by the medical treatment of a protected person, that would be every human on the planet, are prohibited. The experimental gene therapy injection is a violation of all 10 of the Nuremberg Codes of Ethics, which carries a death penalty. I will send supportive information to each of you via email so you can do your due diligence. Next board meeting, I would like to hear a statement from each of you about the conclusion of that information. As citizen to citizen, I am giving you a warning. Listen carefully. The responsibility of these violations or crimes against humanity are being transferred to employers, to educational institutions, and anyone who coerces an experimental procedure...
You've had your three minutes. Could you please wrap up your comments?
Yep, and another, even board members. So I will go ahead and print this up and email it to you, along with my supportive information. That's all.
Thank you. Next is Karlyn Borsheim Black.
Good evening. My name is Karlyn Borsheim Black. I'm a resident of Mount Pleasant, and I'm the mother of three children here in the district. I'm also a former high school English teacher, and I'm a current faculty member at CMU. One reason I think many of us are here this evening is likely as a result of some legislation that has been proposed in Michigan that would limit curriculum and instruction informed by critical race theory. I think that's what has sparked a lot of this, and there will probably be additional decisions to be made in the future, depending on how that goes. So I'd like to make a few points. I think many people are quite confused about what CRT is. I think a lot of people are using that as a sort of dog whistle phrase to scare people that their children are being indoctrinated in schools. As others this evening have stated, CRT is a theory. It's a framework for understanding what race is and how it works. I encountered CRT in graduate school. CRT itself is not often taught in middle school or high school. It is also not about teaching of hating white people or teaching white people to hate themselves. It has no connection to Marxism. It never has. Before anyone makes any decisions about the teaching of race in Mount Pleasant Public Schools, I hope people seek out accurate information about what CRT is, and also seek out what is actually being taught in our schools. I would like to hear from teachers about what is actually being taught versus what people are scared of. I will also say that I am the mother of three biracial children in this district. In this district, I am 100% in favor of my children receiving a curriculum and instruction that addresses concepts like systemic racism, colorblindness, injustice, allyship, these sorts of things, in the fiction and nonfiction that they read in English class, in the history that they learn in social studies. As Seeley Bush said this evening in her very impressive presentation, it is, these are the things that are important for preparing our children for creating a more equitable and just future. I would also, oh, I would also say that students are quite capable of having these conversations. They are having these conversations. They're eager for these conversations. As a high, former high school English teacher myself, I know that if I didn't bring it up, they would. I also expect that Mount Pleasant Public Curriculum and Instruction would include a curriculum that reflects the identities and families of all Mount Pleasant Public School students, including students of color and LGBTQ students and families. I would like my children to learn about these things. At the same time, I would also say that research suggests that teaching and learning about racism or LGBTQ issues is most positive and productive when teachers take a sustained and strategic approach, when texts, concepts, and assignments are part of the official curriculum versus incidental conversations that sort of happen on the fly. Also, when teachers are supported by their departments and administration in that work. No one does their best work when they feel under threat.
You've had your three minutes, could you please wrap up your comments?
Yes. I'd like to see Mount Pleasant Public School Board be more proactive in their support for anti-racist and LGBTQ curriculum and instruction. Thank you so much to the board and to all of our teachers.
Thank you. Next is Laura Borlitt.
Hello. I just thought it might be helpful to mention to the room that in, in our own backyards here, we have two wonderful opportunities to learn more. The Zebueng Cultural Center on the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Sovereign Nation land and the Jim Crow Museum, which is housed at Ferris State University in Big Rapids, Michigan, less than an hour's drive west. And if you have not had a chance to go to either of those locations, it's just quite wonderful. And I hope that you will review why we might need to have such museums. The Jim Crow Museum is called the Museum of Racist Memorabilia. Wondering why we need to have such a museum of such things, it's really quite remarkable. If you can't make it over there, they've got a lovely online opportunity to view some of their holdings. David Pilgrim, the man that started that museum, said, "I'm not afraid to talk about race. I'm afraid not to." And I, I carry that with me all the time, I am afraid not to talk about these things. So, I hope that our continued conversation will be long and deep and productive, thanks.
Thank you. Next is Hannah Hamlin.
Hi there. My name is Hannah Hamlin. I have lived in Mount Pleasant, Michigan for most of my life and I'm going to be a sophomore here at the high school in the fall. I wanted to speak briefly about the teachings of anti-racism in our school district. I think that the fact that the school district has been teaching us all about anti-racism is absolutely incredible. I have never been educated on the impacts of racism in our world this extensively and I have learned so much in the past 12 weeks of the school year than I ever have in my 10 years total of school. And I, I also think that it is amazing that our school has readily available resources for the LGBTQ plus community, for anybody to use. I also wish to very quickly shout out my English teacher, Ms. Torres, in creating a safe space to discuss controversial and critical topics. I will never, yeah. I will never forget how impactful this was for me. I think that this has helped people to be themselves and express themselves freely when they may not have that opportunity in their own homes. And I also think that our students in the district need to be educated on anti-racism and on minorities because that is valuable knowledge to have in the real world. This curriculum has been taught in a mature, unbiased way and I am always going to remember the positives of the fact that I was educated on anti-racism so heavily as a freshman. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Clat Hamlin.
Good evening. My name is Clat Hamlin and my children, one of them who just spoke now, attend Mount Pleasant High School and we live here in the city of Mount Pleasant. I just want to spend a couple of minutes tonight thanking the members of our board and superintendent, our administrators and staff, and especially our teachers for the amazing effort that they gave the 2020-2021 school year. It was no joke, quite a ride. And I'm really proud to be a part of a school district that worked as diligently as all of you did to give our kids the education, education that they deserve. I'd like to highlight just a few teachers who have made an impact on the lives of my children and have inadvertently impacted life in our home as well. Mr. Clack gave my daughter and many others an opportunity to shine on the stage by essentially creating a Something Out of Nothing musical and then directing an impressive performance at Island Park this spring of 26 Pebbles. He did all of this while keeping students safe and I could not be more grateful to him for that. Mr. Tatum's students, yes, thank you, Mr. Clack. Mr. Tatum's students put on an amazing concert and he included online students in this feat as well. I have no idea how he managed to teach students learning online, how to play and perform in front of a crowd, but that is the magic of teaching, isn't it? Ms. Torres is a common name in my household. I have only met her once, but I feel like I have gotten to know her and the amazing ally that she is for all students here at MPHS. Ms. Torres has created an environment where kids feel safe to be themselves, where students can challenge each other on why they believe what they believe and learn to be cognizant of other viewpoints and ways to see the world and their responsibilities in it. In fact, the entire ninth grade English department at MPHS, and I am going to shout out Mr. Wurgo because he's incredible and I hope we get to keep him, is an incredible group of teachers that this district is lucky to have. It is through these classes in particular that my kids have started asking the tough questions, both at school and at home. Through books like Stamped, Dear Martin, and The Hate U Give, just to name a few, my kids have learned how to get comfortable with being uncomfortable. It is vital that for critical thinking and engagement of issues at large, our students learn this lesson of being uncomfortable. Being uncomfortable facilitates growth and they are learning and growing and doing better thanks to the efforts of your staff. The curriculum provided by these teachers has extended the conversation beyond the classroom and has reached our dinner table. Your teaching here has facilitated teaching at home. I am grateful for what you've given my children and I thank you from the bottom of my heart. I want you to know that when our kids come home and they tell us about the timeline hanging in their English teacher's classroom and the things that students are encouraged to share and express about their own selves, we as parents are listening. We know that adults have to be brave sometimes too and we see your bravery and the positive impact it has on a student who is struggling to be who they are and we as parents are grateful to you for providing those spaces. Please do not lose heart, we do see you. We appreciate you, we value you, and we are so, so grateful. Thank you and have a great summer.
Thank you. Next is Amber Prouse.
Hello. My name is Amber, I live in Isabella County. My children are homeschooled, although my oldest, we had the finances petitioned from our county to your county so that she could attend Mount Pleasant Vocational Technical Honors, or wait, I was a part of that in high school and now I don't know how to divide it, the tech center. I also started attending Mount Pleasant when I was 15 years old and I'm going to open with something incredibly uncomfortable. I grew up in a very small town, but it was when I moved to Mount Pleasant that I experienced racism for the first time, where I was the end of bullying for the first time and it was by a different racial group, two different racial groups, that I endured this from and it was very scary for me, having never lived in a community where there was interracial anything. I come from the whitest community you could come from. I say that because it's hard to say. Because right now we're being taught, because I'm white, I don't get to feel that way. And that's what I'm upset about when it comes to the critical thinking theories that our school is going through. It doesn't seem like it's focusing on the individual, the heart of the person, the feelings of the person. It seems like it's focusing on what is the right or wrong label, the correct or wrong way to interact with someone. We can't stop there. You can't just say, "Oh, because I see you wearing this color of a mask, I have to address you in these three ways." You have to go beyond the skin, that's what you're asking for. I can recognize that you're a black woman, or you're a Muslim man, or you're bisexual, homosexual, whatever the choice is. I can recognize those things, but if I stop there, if that's where the teaching stops and I bypass the heart, we get what we had when prisons were developed. I am going to mention God, I'm a Christian, that probably goes against me a little bit too, sometimes, when I open with it, but I don't want to deny the parts of who I am and what I'm proud of, just like anybody else doesn't want to deny those things. Our jails were started as a poke-your-eye-out, I'm going to poke-your-eye-up thing and then a Christian group came in and said, "We're just killing people. We need to reform the heart on a person, we need to reform the identity on a person, we need to reach into the feelings and the emotions, the purpose of a person as an individual." It was through biblical teachings. Any self-help book you ever read that works, you will find those same teachings in the Bible. It's all pulled out of there and then they take God of it, out of it, which is what they did with the prison systems. That's why the numbers in there are so high, because they removed the part that taught the individual to see an individual. They put in rules and regulations, timeouts don't work. When my children screw up, I do not go to them and say, "Go have a timeout, you did a bad action." I go to my child and I ask him questions. "Juniper, why did you believe you had to take that toy from your brother?" We start at a young, young age with our kids, saying, "Are you trying to preserve yourself? Are you trying to protect yourself in this situation, or are you thinking about the other person too? Are you thinking that there's more than enough?" You can't go after the actions of a person and expect it to have longevity if you're not going after the heart of a person. We cannot bypass those things. I had three different experiences tonight. Standing in the parking lot, I stood with a group of people that invited me and I walked over to another individual and tried to introduce myself to them and they turned their eyes up and would not talk to me. I walked up to another group of people that are also, like, the parking lot was separated. The parking lot was a perfect example of why we need to go after the heart, not the color of a mask, or the color of shoes, or the color of skin, or you have to go after the individual. You have to introduce to the person. We need to teach that in school, we need to go back to having Duncan like I had in fifth grade where they taught me to say things-
You've had your three minutes, could you please wrap up your comments?
I'll just wrap them up. Guys, we got to go after identity, not rights and wrongs of labeling people.
Next is Maureen Eath.
Yes, Maureen Eath, yes. Good evening. I am Maureen Eath and I'm a resident of Mount Pleasant. I'm a faculty at CMU, I teach African-American literature and world literature, African diaspora studies. So the issue that you're all talking about are issues that deal with courses that I teach. Look at me here. How many black people are here right now? Put up your hand. You don't see race? If you don't see me as black, you've got a problem, all right? Yes, exactly. That's critical race theory. What it says to you is, let's think about theory, it's a tool. Let's think about how race informs the way you treat people like me, talk to people like me, address people like me, or create policies that either empower, disempower, marginalize, subordinate, erase people like me or the history of people like me. That's critical race theory. It doesn't say to you, "Hate yourself." It doesn't say to you, "Feel guilty." If you want to feel guilty, fine, but do something about it. I don't want your guilt. I want you to understand how certain attitudes, an understanding of history or the lack of understanding of history affects the way you treat me, write about me, write about people like me. First, I want to commend this board for undertaking this project because it's a complex issue. Critical race theory is a tool, I'm going to focus on that. How do we begin to talk about the Trail of Tears? You want to talk about the pilgrims and the founding fathers and the policies they created? Oh, by the way, do you want to talk about American history? And how complete or incomplete is American history if you cannot talk about the Trail of Tears? Slavery, 1619 Project, by the way, is about slavery. 1619, the first Africans arrived in Jamestown, Virginia as indentured servants. Upon their arrival, they were reclassified as slaves. Did you have history of slavery in this country? You want to deny it? Go ahead. That's, you know, let's talk about that. That is critical race theory, that's what it's doing. Saying, let's look at our history and understand how these historical moments and attitudes have affected the way we look at ourselves in relation to people around us. Do we want to talk about Native Americans? Do we want to deny that the Holocaust happened? Do we want to deny that Japanese people were interned here? Do we want to deny that Chinese Americans were also treated poorly here? And that AAIP population or communities are being treated badly today?
You've had your three minutes, please wrap up your comments.
So, in conclusion, I want to say that if we want to create this world or America that has liberty and justice and equity for all, you're going to have to talk about this and you need to use critical race theory as a tool. Thank you very much.
Next is Drew Steggeis.
Members of the board, members of the community. My name's Drew Steggeis, I'm resident of the community, disabled veteran. I come here kind of confused. Serving my country, I served with all people of all races. I don't understand it, you know, I, I'm a disabled veteran, I, I got my disable, disability from getting blown up. After I got blown up, I started having seizures. The person who took care of me was a Pacific Islander, Dr. Doc Heather. I didn't see color, that was Doc. My squad leader, Saren Gonzalez, he was Mexican, I didn't see him as that, he was just Saren Gonzalez. Saren McCray, he might have been black, I didn't see him as that, he was just Saren McCray. Escavell, he was our VC. He was from El Salvador, I didn't care, he was just Escavell. Who cares? Color is not, color is just something that happens to your skin, it's part of melatonin. I don't give a crap. Yeah, we have a history. Guess what we do with our history, we learn from our history. You want to talk about our history, let's talk about all the soldiers that died at Gettysburg, fighting for our slavery to end it, to end slavery. Yeah, we have a lot of bad history, we have a lot of stuff that we've messed up on, but what, what other country can you think of that has fought against all the bad stuff that it's done to fix it? What other country can you think of where you can stand up and tell this stuff in front of people? Where you can stand up and talk all this crap? Where you can sit in the chair and say, "I don't want to stand for my national anthem." Where you can say, "I don't want to kneel," or "I can kneel for the national anthem." "I don't want to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, I don't want to do all these things for my country." Where, what other country are you free enough to do that? I, I am so sick and tired of hearing all this stuff about how are we so oppressed in this country? You are not oppressed in this country, we are so dang free in this country, they were able to stand up here and tell you these things. Then I am able to sit in that, in, in that unit with those men and I am able to- That I am able to sit in that, in that unit with those men, and I am able to shake all their hands, and I don't see another color. Those are all my brothers. I'm able to come out here and sit in here with this discourse with all these people, and I don't care what color they are when I get up here. I don't care what opinion they have. I defended their right to have that opinion. I will defend their right to have that opinion to the end of my life. I don't care. I don't care if I agree with your opinion or not. And you know what? We don't need to go to the parking lot and have a fight. We can go out to the parking lot and have a damn discussion, because that's what America is. We have a discussion. This critical race theory, it is a theory. It isn't a fact. You know what was a fact? Back in the day when Martin Luther King said that we need to be judged on a character and not our damn skin color? That is a fact. I apologize for my language, and I apologize for everything else, but that's all I have to say. You judge everybody based on their character, not on their skin color. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Michelle Klingensmith.
My name is Michelle Klingensmith. I've been a resident here in the United States too, but Mount Pleasant, Michigan, for just over thirty-five years. I've had three kids go through Mount Pleasant Public School, kindergarten through high school, and I would like to take a moment, first of all, to welcome everyone in this auditorium to take a breath. Let it out. And if that felt good, take another one. Being a human being, that's another thing I'd like to welcome you to. Welcome to the human race. Okay? We're all in this together, and it is a beautiful, beautiful thing. And I would like to talk about, I've got to find my notes now. I went a little bit off cuff, off cuff there. I'd also like to note that being a human is a liberal activity. We all grow in different ways. You can't predict where you're going to go. You can't predict what's going to happen to you. That is my God-given right. Education is also a liberal activity, and so it's easy to get scared of you. It's easy to be afraid what you're teaching my kids. But the neat thing is that you're also professionals, and you come to the classroom every day, ready to learn from your kids. That's impressive. So, education is about presenting facts. It's about allowing young people to bring facts to the table. As a parent, I can be anxious about my child's future, about the decisions that they will bring to life, and yet, that is my job. This child owns their life. They have choices that they need to make to bring themselves to actualizing, to their own potential. It is the job of the schools to allow students a space to bring their thoughts and their ideas into, and this is important, a peer-oriented space. Isn't that great? You guys have the best jobs. They get to bring their ideas to their peers, just like we do. We're introducing them to being adults. It's pretty awesome. Facts are just that, facts, and we as adults need to help our students learn how to think critically about historical and critical current events, the impacts of the facts and the responses to all of the outcomes of the decisions that were made, for better or worse. Teaching the humanities is fundamentally different than teaching mathematics. I know this because I went to school when science became something more than fact-based, and it didn't do me any good. Facts in society have facets and implications for all of the people involved. Race is a social construct. There is no scientific evidence for it. Yes, my skin color is different than yours, but race is a social construct.
You've had three minutes. Please wrap up your comments.
And has wide and deep roots in the institutions of our democratic society. Public education is one of the greatest tools in our democratic institutions, so let me remind you, race is a social construct. It needs to be deconstructed in order for our children to live beyond and above.
Next is Robert Newby.
I'm Robert Newby, and I've lived in Mount Pleasant now since 1988. I began my professional career as a public school teacher in Pontiac, Michigan. From there, I worked for four years for the Michigan Civil Rights Commission before I went back to graduate school. From graduate school, after graduate school, I taught for fourteen years at Wayne State University. I joined the faculty at CMU in 1988. My specialty really has to do with racism and inequality. And let me also say this. My son attended West for one year, and he was at, I think, Mount Pleasant High for one year, before we decided that the best thing for him to do was to go to a boarding school. So he went to Fork Union Boarding School in Virginia. My wife, now deceased, was a faculty member at CMU, and she was also a principal at Mary Maguire for one year. I'd just like to say a couple of things about, particularly about critical race theory. I think one of the things that people don't really know what it is, one of the founding principles, I guess I would say, the common thread of critical race theory, is that this nation was built, was founded on white supremacy. That's not anything we can hide from or want to dismiss in any way, anyway. And the 1619 Project begins discussing that, begins examination of that. And I guess, I guess one of the things, last week, there was a one-hundredth anniversary of the Tulsa massacre. I hope some of you saw that and you have some understanding of it. But you know what? Anybody attending the Tulsa Public Schools had no idea it ever happened. That is one of the things that, that's a common thread throughout our history, is a cover-up of what this history has been. One of the reasons that America is the richest nation in the whole world, they had three hundred years of free labor, they had free land because of genocide. So we have to examine that, and we have to understand where that comes from. So, and it's important that we do that. People, I mean, I heard a lot of discussion here about individuals and this kind of thing. The fact is, we live in a structure that is a white supremacist structure, even today. I mean, so, we have to understand that, we have to examine it, and students have to understand it. Otherwise, they will continue to do the same things. If white students believe, it's not about teaching white students to hate themselves. It's about understanding our history. And one of the things, the other aspect of critical race theory is to examine this structure so we can transform it so that there can be equality and justice. Because nobody can say today, that, I mean, we talk about the notion that the skin color is only skin deep. That is true, but the fact is, the understandings that we have of race in this nation is not, is more than skin deep. It's deeply embedded in our organization, the society. I mean, there's a good, there's a reason why whites are better off. Somebody used the statistic to say that, I think that black wealth is about...
You've had three minutes. Please wrap up your comments.
Okay. About one-sixteenth of what white wealth is. That didn't happen by accident. It happens on the basis of what the rules of this society have been over the years. So I guess I would just like to say, I think it's important that we examine this, and it's not about what's in people's hearts. It's about how our society is organized, and it's important that students understand that, so that we can transform the society in such a way that there's equality and justice in it.
Next is Hayen Gilstorf Alcantra.
Would you like to start by introducing yourself and saying where you're from? Just say your name.
Come here. Look at me. It's okay. Shh, 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 it's okay. It's okay. It's okay.
If you'd like, we can have you come back in just a moment, have a chance to breathe, and then we'll go on, and once you come back up, okay?
I have to say, the greater the need to go up there and say something and have something to say, I respect that.
You're fine. Go ahead. We're all willing to listen.
Next is Brent Fisher.
Good evening. My name is Brent Fisher. I'm a parent of a student at Mount Pleasant Middle School. First thing is, you know, there's some diversity here. I'm glad and happy to see that we can all get together and discuss different aspects, opinions, and everybody can listen to each other. I know I've learned some things this evening that are somewhat enlightening, and I hope everybody else does as well, so we can all learn from each other. One question I have for the board is, did any of you receive the correspondence I sent on May 31 regarding what was brought to my attention being taught at Mount Pleasant Middle School to my child? I mean, I see some heads nodding yes. There was no response, so I was just curious if it was received. The only person that reached back, reached back out to me was the principal at Mount Pleasant Middle School, discussed some things with the teacher, reached back out, there was some communications. Thing is still work in progress to sort some things out, but there was some communication back to me. So, you know, critical race theory, CRT, been a big topic of discussion tonight. One thing that I hope everybody understands, there's a difference between critical thinking and critical race theory. Critical thinking covers a broad aspect of things. Diverse education is very important. So, back to what is critical race theory. It is fast becoming, I'm sorry, let me start over. CRT is a modern approach to social change developed from broader critical theory, and is fast becoming America's new institutional orthodoxy. I got a insert from a black woman downstate that I met here recently, very inspirational woman, very good speaker. What we are experiencing in the United States is a version of CRT that has been especially designed to disintegrate our foundations and our... designed to disintegrate our foundations and our core beliefs. CRT approaches issues such as justice, racism, and inequality with specific intent of revolution to reform American society. It asserts that our structures of government, law, culture, and society are inherently and inescapably racist. Even hard work, education, and merit-based achievement are racist. I see some truth to that, I see some truth to what some other people have said this evening. I think there's maybe a happy medium in there somewhere, I mean, diverse education is important, like I said. But CRT at its core, to better understand it, you need to look at a brief history of Marxism. Marxists built their political program on a theory of class conflict. That is fact. Over the last century, many regimes dealt with Marxist-type revolutions with each ending in disaster. Socialist governments such as OSIN in the former Soviet Union, Cuba, Cambodia, China, and others racked up staggering body counts of close to 100 million. We as people have at one time or another heard stories and tales of Gulag, show trials, executions, mass starvation, and slavery. Marx's ideas bore about some of the darkest moments in human history. Marxist scholars in Western civilization adapted the revolutionary theory to social and racial unrest of the 1960s. Race was substituted for class. It is increasingly becoming the default ideology in public institutions over the last decade. Government agencies, public school systems, teacher training programs, corporate HR departments through the form of diversity training, public policy frameworks, and social curriculum. Many of the stuff I had in here, other people already spoke about, so I don't see the point in restating those facts. One thing I will say is... Where is it? All people are created equal, we're born human, we're born equal. It's our choices as we grow up in life and decisions that define us make us good, bad, or indifferent. A lot of things influence us, we need to learn the bad and good of our history, but it's one thing to be focused on certain mindsets and certain things. Let our kids be kids, as they grow up, they can learn certain things and diversify themselves. Part of their family structure is part of that diversification as well. So I just hope everybody respects one another and their families and what their beliefs are and stuff, and we figure out how to come to a common ground on it all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Elise Bennett.
Elise Bennett, Mount Pleasant. As a kindergartner, I was a good student, all A's. I noticed the other kids always got stickers and smiley faces on their papers, but not me. When I asked the teacher why, she told me it was because Asians are supposed to get good grades. At that age, I wasn't aware of what race was and I didn't know what Asian meant, but it sounded like a good thing for... So for a while, whenever I received a compliment, I let people know it was because I was Asian. I'm not Asian. A year later, we moved to the reservation. There I learned what it was to be loved and doted upon by adults. I knew what it felt like to have adults around me who cared for my safety and my feelings. Practical strangers would rush up on I or one of the other kids who fell and bumped our heads, it was a community that cares for its own. Because I learned that there, I was keenly aware when it was lacking. And from my very first time when I went to a teacher for help at Mary Maguire, I knew the adults there were different. It didn't take long for me to realize that that love and care was given to white kids, just not to us. Children learn about race from your actions. Over the years, I went from an A student to one who did the bare minimum. I hated school and I hated the teachers, and as an adult, I'm successful in spite of my experience here. There's nothing that irritates me more than being told by white people how I should feel or that this is being done for me. This generation is the most open and loving yet. These children are not the problem, you were. As someone who experienced racism in all its forms here in these halls, I'm here to tell you that the last thing I want to see is a new generation of children who have caused no harm taught to feel bad about themselves because of their race. Critical race theory teaches that all white behavior is racist and that all minorities are victims. It is born of hate by people who want revenge, not equality. Some of you may have earned your white guilt by decades of nasty exclusionary behavior, but your children did not. Instead of teaching them that all people are equal, some want to bring in hateful and divisive curriculum that only seeks to bring race to the forefront and cause more division. Wrapping this up in history that I'll add we did learn back in the 90s doesn't change its core. It hurts me to hear your children calling themselves oppressors. I'm here asking you to treat your children with fairness, they didn't do this. Do what you need to, to teach teachers and staff that natives and blacks and Hispanic children all deserve love and patience, but do not project your flaws onto your children and raise them with the guilt you think you need to feel now. If you want to end racism, it's not by lowering all children to the level of how minorities have been treated, it's by recognizing that all children are innocent and then treating them equally. Thank you.
Next is Melissa Isaac.
Let me start my own timer, because I know how I am. Wabzi kwai, wabzi kwai, meanwhile, wabshke, wabi kwon ikwai, na me doram, seg nachi fwa kinen donjaba. The first thing that I would like to do is pause for a few seconds of my time to take a moment of silence for the 215 young ancestors at the boarding school that never made it home. Mi gwich. Well, first of all, I want to say, oh, my name is Melissa Isaac, I have a middle schooler here and a recent graduate. I'm also an alumna... alumnus? Alumni? Of Mount Pleasant Public Schools, and I'm just here to share my information as a parent and educator and a citizen of Mount Pleasant. But before I begin, I want to say Happy Pride Month, I haven't heard that mentioned yet, so Happy Pride Month to all. I am a doctoral student at Central Michigan University in the Educational Leadership Program, wrapping up my first year, and I'm just a townie. Townie at heart. I, my family, and my ancestors have lived on this land since time immemorial as Anishnaabik people. So after hearing everything tonight and getting caught up, because I'm usually pretty active in all of these things, I think it is my recommendation that we in fact teach what cultural responsive... Critical Response Theory is, because it sounds like there's a lot of people who don't understand what it is. And we're not going to go back and explain it, because there have been some really excellent explanations tonight. But what I can say when I hear the things about heritage, history, patriotism, indoctrination, if indoctrination worked, I would not be here. My nation would not be here. My ancestors, my children, the people that are coming, for me and my people, would not be here. We would be exterminated, because that was the goal of the education system at its onset. So let's talk about history. Enough of America's history has been swept under the rug. I have dedicated my career to bringing voices to the voiceless, bringing visibility to an invisible population, the original people of this land. I was appointed to both of the Social Studies Standards Upgrades for the state of Michigan for the K-12 Social Studies Standards, and I and other indigenous changemakers had to fight for our history, fight for our history to be included in the standards. Why? Why would Anishnaabik history be an inconvenience or a threat to your heritage, history, or patriotism? The ability to critically think would help you answer that question. That's why it's important that we continue to do that in our classrooms. Censoring, because that's what's happening here, censoring systemic racism, injustice, and inequality will not un-gay the gay, un-queer the queer, nor will it reduce the number of BIPOC people killed by police brutality. It won't bring back my relatives who are murdered, missing, and indigenous, and it definitely won't kill the Indian to save the man, because I'm still here. Mi gwich.
We have one more sheet that we're getting from. At this time, Chloe McKinley.
Hi, everyone, my name is Chloe McKinley, and I am a recent graduate of Mount Pleasant High School, class of 2019. And I wanted to start today just with a little anecdote about Theseus and Ariadne. Theseus was sent into a maze to slay the Minotaur, while Ariadne stayed behind so she could lead him out with her red thread. And that red thread connects every event in history. So I think in teaching critical theory in schools, we teach our students to follow the red thread through these historical events. On the surface, we might see that black people make up 32% of the population, but 56% of the incarcerated population, but looking further, we see some states have rules about not letting convicted felons vote, therefore removing the voices of those incarcerated black folk. All of these issues are intertwined, and we cannot separate race from history, we cannot separate race from politics, because these are still very present issues. And I'm not here to speak over the voices of the POC that have already spoken or will speak, I am here to reiterate that it is important that we no longer silence those voices or silence the hardships that they have faced throughout history. And as a student here, I was able to learn plenty of that, and I am a very curious person. I asked, why, why, why? I'm sure a lot of my teachers in this audience can attest to the fact that I would sit in their classrooms and argue and question and wonder, and that is what we teach here at Mount Pleasant High School in the Mount Pleasant School District. And by silencing certain aspects of education, you're silencing the voices of your own students, because your students are the ones asking the questions. That's all I want to say, thank you all for listening again so much.
Next is David Klack.
Hello, my name is David Klack, and I'm from Mount Pleasant, and I graduated from Mount Pleasant High School in 2017. I was shocked to hear people claim that teaching topics like LGBTQ+ issues to middle schoolers is perverted, indoctrination of kids, and that they are not old enough to know about these topics. I am a gay man, and just from looking at me, I have been quite the attention grabber, even when I was a kid. To say that these kids don't understand these topics at a base level is a true insult to them, considering they had no issues when teaching me about heterosexual relations in 5th grade sex ed. I came out as a gay when I was 11 years old, and yes, my classmates knew what it meant. However, what they truly lacked was an education on the struggles queer people have faced in history, from the Stonewall riots, to the Reagan administration refusing to acknowledge AIDS, which was killing us thousands at a time, to the many large-profile hate crimes that have been committed against people in the community, especially trans women of color, and to, of course, the past continuous strides that have been made for equal rights of gay people, transgender people, non-binary people, and people of all the many beautiful labels that make up this community. I faced so much bigotry as a young teenager, in 7th grade, I was beat up in the locker room, and my conservative heterosexual principal put me in a day of school suspension for starting a fight, and lied to my mother's face about the circumstances behind that act of violence, which ultimately led to me getting beat up a second time two weeks later. A moment that made me feel very little of my classmates and... Made me feel that very little of my classmates and the administration even cared about me, because they weren't educated on our issues. They thought it was okay to gawk at me and see me as less than. There are queer children in these schools, there are children with queer parents, and they need to know that they and their families are seen as just as important as any other. These kids need to learn about the struggle queer people face, and that some kids' parents refuse to teach them, and that is how bigotry truly spreads. Don't let the same thing happen to those kids what happened to me. Queer history is history, queer sex ed is sex ed, and yes, teach kids to not be bigots. Thank you.
Next. Next is Eric Roman.
Good evening, my name is Eric Roman. I'm a resident, townie, taxpayer, vaccinated, and functioning graduate of this high school, class of 1999, proud member of the LGBTQIA community, and an employee of Mount Pleasant Public Schools. Thank you. I really cannot speak any more eloquently than the people who have spoken before me tonight, but what I can say is that for the last five years, I have had the profound privilege of working with your students, with your students, with your students. And I can tell you this, they are hungry for knowledge. They are so hungry for knowledge that despite your words, your wishes, your values, they will learn on their own. So many of your children are hurting, questioning, struggling in this world that we have created. They are simultaneously being taught to celebrate and to hate who they are, I can't deny that, every day. Ultimately, they will become who they will become with or without us. Give them the chance, the grace, and the support to embrace their own learning, they're going to do it anyway, no matter what you say or do, no matter how many candles you light, no matter how many rallies you hold. With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, it is now the part where Board of Education is open for discussion. Does the board have anything they would like to say or address at this time?
I do. I just would like to thank everybody, all the sides that have spoken tonight. I respect all of you for being here and supporting us as a school board. I do want it to be known that I, as a school board member, my sole responsibility here is to help promote a safe and inclusive environment for all of our students. I take that responsibility very strongly. I appreciate the folks in this community, the parents who trust us with your children. And I just want to quote a couple things from the Michigan Association of School Psychologists. This is something they put out March 19, 2020. "We must address the needs of students whose identities put them at risk for marginalization, harassment, and/or discrimination." It is also our responsibility to... It is also our responsibility to use best practices in meeting the needs of one of the most vulnerable groups, the LGBTQ+ youth." Thank you.
Is there anything else that the board would like to say?
I'd like to, I guess, continue and look at us and see how do we move forward in this process. And so we've heard loud from our community over the last couple weeks. I'm guessing we're going to continue to hear. And so at this point, I know we've had the English department, or parts of the English department from the high school present to some of you guys last week about what's happening in the classroom, and I guess maybe we could invite them over to our board meetings, so we could all hear what they had to say. And I would say, you know, maybe can we look at other areas as well, hear from them, have a kind of an inclusive process of looking at our curriculum? And I guess my question to you, Jennifer, is how do we move forward with this? Do we form a subcommittee? Do we continue here at board meetings in this public setting? Or kind of what are our next steps?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. You know, fortunately, we will always continue here in this public setting, right? That is our role, and that is our job to continue to do. We did meet with the LA Department from the high school and talked about this issue. We met with myself, Amy attended the meeting, and then our co-chairs of the Professional Study Committee. So I think it's important to remember that Mount Pleasant Public Schools does have a process where all curriculum is brought forth to the Professional Study Committee. It's been a process that we've had in place for over 50 years, where we have teachers and administrators that work together with a team of experts from their academic area to bring forth curriculum and suggestions. So however we move forward, if that is a subcommittee, certainly if we wanted to invite the English Language Arts Department to present to us, or Social Studies, or any curriculum that you feel necessary, I want to make sure that we include the PSC committee in that process. PSC committee, I want to make sure that we include PSC in that process as we move forward, because we do have a process. Our teachers engage in a lot of research, and they bring that forward to PSC. And then, of course, any curriculum recommendation comes through PSC to this board for ultimate approval. So I want to make sure that we continue to follow those steps in that process. So earlier today, I sent you some additional information from our high school ELA department. That, to me, feels like the next best step is to have the English Language Arts Department work with PSC to bring a presentation here to our board. But I'm open for any suggestion, you know, certainly that anyone has. But I think in talking with Linda, Erin King is the co-chair of PSC, John Winkler, the high school principal, is also on PSC, so that was who was included in our group discussion last week.
I want to thank both of you for speaking. Courtney, that was very brave of you to say, and it needed to be said, and I certainly appreciate it. Michael Follin, who is a well-known author and teacher of school administration, said in one of his books that it is our moral imperative to educate all children, all children every day. And that includes not only the skills from the classes that they are taking, but also how to be a learner. That is our moral imperative. And how to be a learner is not just to sit back and take in information and then regurgitate it onto a piece of paper. It's to be able to think for themselves. And I have seen amazing things out of our students in this district, amazing things out of students in my career. One person mentioned that maybe some kids are too young to be thinking critically. I tell you what, they sure learn how to hate awful early in their lives. I think that's where I stand as-
They also learn the law from-
-where I stand as a board member, and I wanted to make that clear.
I'd just like to add to what Dana said about our students. We saw examples tonight of how great our students can be. We are, as the board, we're a representative body, and we do our work best when we hear from our community. Students might not be old enough to vote, but the kids who spoke tonight made it clear that they are certainly old enough to think for themselves and to advocate for themselves. I want to thank them.
We do understand that children, as adults, we're supposed to raise children.
Excuse me.
No.
Inappropriate language is not accepted in this room. I would like to thank everyone in the community for stepping forward. This was a very diverse group of people who had opinions, and you were all very eloquent in sharing your thoughts. It's very valuable for us to hear our community and the whole spectrum. Mount Pleasant is a very, very broad community. We are very diverse. We often forget that. It's very hard as a board member sometimes, because we see certain components of who we are connected to. So I want to thank all of you. We know how hard it is to step up and speak, so we really appreciate you coming and stating what your thoughts and your feelings are regarding Jen and the process. I really think leveraging the PSC and having some conversations is a really good way to go. One of the things that we are challenged as board members is, we know the curriculum, but we don't know all of the curriculum. It's very difficult. It's very complex. There's lots of pieces to it. Our community has been changing a lot lately. We try to react to who our community is and the needs of our children as it's moving forward. I'll just say COVID, and that very fact right there and what we've had to go through. So I think leveraging the mechanisms and the talent that we have in our district, I think is a very good way to move forward for us and for our community, because everyone has a voice in that space. And so your recommendation of, you know, the English department, the Social Studies, all of the people that are being connected with this, the racial, the ethnic, the diversity that we have in our community, and how we, in our community, teach our children that we are this kind of a community, the languages that we have, and to make sure that all of the buildings and everyone across the whole district understands that, and we're communicating that need and that want, that we want them all to see our community and to know and how to react and live within our community of who we are. And I think PSC has proven over the 50 years to be a great model to do that mechanism. So I like your thoughts on PSC moving forward, and I think right here is a great example of our community, and they all have a thought, and they all have feelings, and they have how they are connected to that in our children. Because yes, our children are very important, and we do need to teach them how to think. That is our main function, so I agree with that.
I'd just like to say that I agree with everything that was said up here, and I too appreciate that so much of the community was able to come out with a diverse representation of the different thoughts, and that is something that makes our community great, is that we are not single-minded and that everyone does have examples that they can share within the community. And especially, I know how hard it is to get up here and speak, so I would like to thank everyone that did so. And I would just also like to take a moment that this is the end of the school year and probably one of the more difficult school years that anyone has ever been a part of. And not just saying that from a board member's standpoint, but as you sit here as representation of parents and teachers and community members, that this was a very difficult year. And just so, I thank you very much for continuing to advocate for the children within the district, and also that we can celebrate that we made it through this school year, and we made so much of the school year with children able to have a really wonderful experience in a very different climate. So I would just like to take that opportunity to thank everyone with that as well.
Does the board at this time have anything else they would like to share? Not seeing anything, I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.